To our regularly scheduled school board meeting for Spotsylvania County for the 8th of February. We want to take an opportunity to thank Sergeant Perry Clark is with us in the back of the, back of the room. And we also want to thank Mr. Paul Trampy from our Board of Supervisors for being in place representing Salem District. We have all members present. We have a quorum. We'd like to have the Assembly stand as Ms. Shelley leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Shelley, thank you. We're at item 1.03, our agenda. We have a motion on the floor to accept the agenda. Motion by Ms. Blaylock, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt, I'm sorry. I would like to move that we amend the agenda. I would like to add an action item to discuss the possibility of closing school to students on March 1st, the primary. If I could get any support, I would like to add that action item and amend the agenda.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion to close school on 1 March, 2006.
I would like to open, I would like to have a discussion on that. If we could add it to the item as a, as a possible discussion, action item, and I'll make a motion at that time, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So we're going to make a motion to add, amend the agenda for 8.03. So we have a motion by Ms. Blaylock, and we have a second by Ms. Shelley. All in favor of amending the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The agenda is amended with a 7-0 vote.
Thank you.
Moving on to 3.01, because we have no public hearing scheduled, we have our instructional highlights by the Battlefield Middle School Women's Chorus, Sweet Harmony. Ms. Leonard, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. This evening, Sweet Harmony is a women's chorus at Battlefield Middle School that includes members of the 7th and 8th grade. Directed by choral teacher Valerie Akers, students meet after school once per week to rehearse and to share their love of music. These ladies perform often at Battlefield Middle School, displaying their love of singing and the gift of music for others. Ms. Akers.
Good evening. We'll be performing two selections for you this evening. The first one is called "Ala Nanita." It's in Spanish and English.
(Singing) Ala Nanita, na na Nanita, hea, hea, hea. Ni Jesus tiene sueño, bendito sea, bendito sea. Ala Nanita, na na Nanita, hea, hea, hea. Ni Jesus tiene sueño, bendito sea, bendito sea. Fuentes de lo que corres, clara y sonora. Rui señor en la selva, cantando lloras. Baila mientras se cuela, se va la sea. Ala Nanita, na na, hea, hea, hea. Lule, thou little tiny child, bye-bye, lule, lule. Lule, thou little tiny child, bye-bye, lule, lule. Lule, thou little tiny child, bye-bye, lule, lule. Lule, thou little tiny child, bye-bye, bye, lule, lule. Bye-bye, lule, lule. Ala Nanita, na na, hea, hea, hea.
Our second selection and our final selection tonight is called "Ferret's Lady," and it's from Nursery Around Cantadas. And the ladies are going to also be doing this with sign language. So we hope you enjoy our selection, "Ferret's Lady," with sign language.
(Singing) Ferret's little lady, it's time to close your eyes. Go to sleep, dream sweet dreams, oh my ferret's lady. Golden slumbers, kiss your eyes. Smiles awake you when you arise. Ferret's little lady, it's time to close your eyes. Go to sleep, dream sweet dreams, oh my ferret's lady. London Bridge will fly away, fly away, fly away. London Bridge will fly away, fly away, fly away. Ferret's lady, ferret's lady. Ferret's lady, ferret's lady. London Bridge will fly away, ferret's lady, fly away. London Bridge will fly away, go to sleep, dream sweet dreams, oh my ferret's lady. London Bridge will fly away, go to sleep, dream sweet dreams, oh my ferret's lady. Golden slumbers, kiss your eyes. Smiles awake you when you arise. Oh, ferret's lady, ferret's lady, it's me. Ferret's lady, ferret's lady, it's me.
Thank you for having us this evening. Thank you very much for having us. We really appreciate you being here to perform for you tonight.
Ms. Akers, thank you very much. And the young ladies, thank you for your beautiful, your beautiful songs. Any board member have any comments they'd like to make? Awesome work, ladies, awesome. Let's give them another round of applause. Moving on with 4.01, "The Great Debate." Ms. Leonard, please.
Yes, sir. For the past 10 years, Spotsylvania County Middle Schools have participated in "The Great Debate." This event, held annually, was a joint collaboration between the local chapter of the NAACP, Sunday School Union, and our school division. Today, as debate teams across our middle schools thrive, as well as cultivate the next generation of leaders throughout our school system and the Commonwealth, the goal of "The Great Debate," to challenge our students to consider various points of view and defend one's stance, has been realized. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Mo Petway to the podium to share a few words and to recognize those individuals who have been instrumental in the success of "The Great
Good evening, everyone. For the past 10 years, the Spotsylvania NAACP, as well as the Sunday School Union and the school division, have hosted this event. And we just want to show our appreciation for that. What I'd like to do, if you don't mind, I want the schools, the school board members to come down for a second, please. If the school board members come, just for a second. And we asked, what we have is a plaque for the chairman of the school board. So we're thanking the chairman of the school board for their support in this event throughout the years. The school board has definitely been an advocate and very, very supportive for that. So we have a plaque for the chairman of the school board. Thank you. And while you're standing there, there are some members of the school board that's taken a personal interest, has been involved in assisting us in making sure the event happens. We have a plaque for Amanda Baylock, personally placed, so that she can take it and put on her wall. Throughout the years, anytime we needed anything, Amanda was the first one to step out and assist us in judges again. Thank you so much for your assistance in that, also. Next, we have Dr. Myers. Dr. Myers has consistently been a judge. I mean, anytime, each time we needed, he came forth and really put forth an effort to do that. I really appreciate Dr. Myers for his assistance in doing that. And next, we have Mr. Blaine. Mr. Blaine serves as a judge. I mean, he came around and time and time again, he thanked you so much for that, for doing, yeah. And next, we have Don Shelly. Don Shelly was with us as we get out there. The school board just been, I mean, they've been overboard in assisting us in making sure this event be a success in Spotsylvania County. So give the school board a hand. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Can I get a picture? You guys want to get a picture?
Oh, picture.
One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we ask if Dr. Baker and his staff could come up real quick, like, you know, now, ever since Dr. Baker's been on board, he continued, we started earlier, but he continued the success of that, and I think it's really great that he put forth the effort to do that. So first, we'd like to give, let's see, Dr. Baker, Mr. Wolf, Don Uppercote, Ms. Daniels, Ms. Daniels, come on, Ms. Daniels, yes, always. Every time we need any assistance, she's always there to do that. Wanted to thank them. Keith Wolf, Mr. Wolf has been, he came on board, it was already in existence. Appreciate Don Uppercote, anytime we needed a building, he was always, he was always there to get it. And so we definitely appreciate Dr. Baker and his staff. Take it off, take it off. Yes, it's Don, he knows about it, yes. Okay, and Ms. Carla Farino, where is she at? Yes, yes, come on, all right, yes, good.
Thank you. She knows something.
Let's give him a hand, please. The school board, Dr. Baker and his administrative staff, thank you so much. Yes, a picture. Okay, finally, all of the school, the middle school principals, the middle school principals, as well as John J. Wright, that's where we started, middle school, all middle school principals, please come forward. Middle school principal or representative, come on, come on. Come on, without the middle school. There you go, all right, awesome. Freedom Middle. Let's see, let's have. Okay, you don't mind going on line, just let me do that. Okay. Your alphabetical order. Okay, okay. First, we'll start with, who we start with? Battlefield, all right. Battlefield, all right. Thank you so much, Battlefield. That's it.
See if they can get that.
Freedom, all right. Well, they gave it to me. Chester, Chester, thank you so much. I didn't, they gave it to me, I knew I had ABC, they gave it to me, I guess. Oh, all right, yeah. They started at this school from the beginning, all of us at Culture Center, but John J. Wright used to be, that's where we first started getting stuff going. Well, thank you so much for your assistance, Mr. All right, thank you. Now River, all right, Now River, all right. Now River, as always, them guys, man, Freedom, the principal of Freedom, and Now River, and Battlefield, man, you guys are awesome. Thank you so much. Post Oak, all right, thank you, thank you. Spotsy Middle, all right, thank you. Thornburg, all right, all right. Yes, 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 okay.
Ready? Ready, one, two, three. One more, just make her one, two, three. Thank you.
All right, come on, get those people. Without the middle school principal, it would not have happened, and we appreciate them. And each time we went to that school, the principal themselves was at the school to assist us in preparing for this event. And we just thank you so much for your efforts, and hopefully that, you know, that it's continuing to be a great thing. And conclusion is that, and then with your school having comments alike, but what we wanted to do, just because we're transferring it over, want to do a proclamation that where that we are sort of relieving it to the school, because they have done so well, and they have their own internal activities going on there, and we just really, really appreciate that. So we have a proclamation. Proclamation. Whereas the Spotsylvania branch of the NAACP established "The Great Debate," School Debate Program in 2005, to assist students in becoming more informed citizens, increase their analytical talent, and enhance their imaginative skills, both as individual and team thinkers, as they develop their thoughts' process through the fine art of persuasive communication. Whereas the Spotsylvania NAACP partner with the Spotsylvania School, Sunday School Union and School Division, with this program to reach thousands of students within and beyond community to challenge, expand, and stimulate their minds. Whereas, results of a community collaborative effort, "The Great Middle School Debate" is now permanently established as a formal part of the Spotsylvania School System. Be it resolved, that since the original program founders and the Spotsylvania School Division has collaborative hosted this event for over 10 years, and the school's system routinely conduct and participate in debate tournaments, and our students and community are greatly enriched through their collaborative effort, the Spotsylvania branch of the NAACP now formally hands over this extraordinary program to the very capable hands of the Spotsylvania School Division, encouraging you to continue, inspire our youth to participate in productive dialogue through provoking discussions and form resolution in the spirit of consciousness. Signed, Andrew Yancey, President of NAACP, and Cleopatrick Coleman, President of the Spotsylvania Sunday School Union. Bless, give him a hand, please. Thank you so much, and I give a proclamation to you.
Once of all, we want to thank the NAACP for, and the Sunday School Union, and others in the community, especially board members that have gave of their time to invest in our children. I have mentioned before that our school division, as we're going to talk about later, needs money in order to run the schools in an efficient way so that we can educate our children. But what we really need is human capital, people that are willing to give of their time and energies to invest in what we call our most valuable resource, and that's our children. So on behalf of this school board, we'd like to humbly thank the NAACP and their leadership, the Sunday School Union and their leadership, and all those that found it not robbery to give of their time to Spotsylvania's best, our children. With that being said, I guess we're going to move on to 4.02. Ms. Leonard.
Thank you. This month, we are displaying artwork in the school board office from five of our schools. These schools are Battlefield Elementary, art teacher Frankie Wheeler; Cedar Forest Elementary, art teacher Sarah Ramey; Riverview Elementary, art teacher Anne Flewes; Smith Station Elementary, art teacher Daphne Rogers; and Thornburg Middle, art teacher Letitia McMillan. We celebrated these student artists with appreciation certificates at a reception held prior to
Mrs. Leonard, may you continue with the superintendent's award?
Yes, ma'am. Our superintendent's award this month is Lily Paz. Unfortunately, Lily was not able to be with us this evening. She is a 7th grader from Freedom Middle School. However, I do believe the art teacher is present, so if we could, could we please have Andrew Beckers come forward to accept her certificate for us? And her artwork will be hanging in the superintendent's office for the month of February.
Sorry, I'm sorry. There we go. Testing, testing. I'm sorry to jump on the mic, but usually our student is able to make it. I'm so sorry that she wasn't able to. But I did want to point out to the audience and to the board, if you have an opportunity, this hangs in my office, and you're welcome to come in almost any time to my office. But we'll keep this here throughout the evening. If, I think I and a few others spent quite a bit of time in my office, the artwork says "Laughing Lollipop Licking Llamas in a Lokomotive." That's the title of it. So besides the alliteration, everything that is located within the artwork begins with the letter L. And it is fascinating journey to go through this piece, to see not only the imagination, but how much was put in there, the thought, and so if you get a chance, spend some time trying to identify all that is in there. It's really fascinating. And because she wasn't able to be here tonight, I wanted to point that out. Thanks.
Dr. Baker, thank you. And we'd like to make sure that we recognize the young lady for her great efforts in her artwork. It's just absolutely phenomenal. I can't, you can't say anything more than just outstanding. So kudos to her and her teacher for inspiring her to perform the artwork in the way she did. And I also like to say, put a little shot out there for athletes. I'm a big proponent of athletes, and you can see those cat-like reflexes that I have. You can give me a round of applause for that. Moving on to 5.01, Public Comments. Dr. Martin.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Chairman, we do not have any speakers signed up at the moment, but I will read the instructions in the event that someone would like to come forward. The public comment segment of our board meetings is the time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker's allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time from the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues, and that all speakers maintain a level of decorum and mutual respect for one another. I turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the school board? Is anyone in the audience that would like to address the school board, please come Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close 5.01, Public Comments, and now open up 5.02, Board Member Comments. I'd like to start with Ms. Blaylock.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Just a couple of things, just had a great time on Saturday morning with a lot of you at the Spotsylvania Education Foundation Scholar Bowl 2016. Huge success and just a lot of fun for a good cause. So I appreciate everyone coming out. I also would like to say that I've been visiting schools this week, and we have kicked off Black History Month. There's a lot of programs going on. I would encourage all parents to figure out what's going on. Be sure you go to the programs and the events, and I was just very pleased with what I saw as I was visiting this week. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Blaylock. Mr. Twig. Okay, thank you, Mr. Twig. Ms., Dr. Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just take this opportunity to thank both Maintenance and Dominion for another several days of overnighters, to restore power back to Chancellor High, Chancellor Middle, and to re-correct a situation with the underground cabling. Also like to bring attention, what the board members have in front of them is the 2016 VSBA Northeast Region Spring Network Forum. The brochure is there before you. This event will take place on March the 9th at Falkir High School. And if you can make it available in your, in your time and your schedule, we're hoping that we have a very good event, and that our response from our other regional, Northeast Regional participants and school boards will be able to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Mr. Blaine.
It's really terrific to hear some music and some of the other fine arts. I'm always impressed at what our students and teachers accomplish, and many compliments there. But I've noticed every time I walk into a meeting like this, it's organized, ready to go, I have someone's sent out notices about it, and somebody's here to take pictures and so on, and I just think it'd be very nice to ask Renee Daniels to just stand up and let us thank you, Renee, for all of the terrific work you do in the PR department. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Ms. Shelley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was also at the Scholar Bowl. It just came more to light that I cannot bowl very well. But it was fun, and it was, it was just a low-key fun event. So thank you to the Spotsylvania Education Foundation for getting it going, and all of the sponsors that were there or supported the event. It was awesome. I want to also just remind everybody that tomorrow evening, beginning at 4:30, is the Board of Supervisors meeting, and Mr. Taylor will be presenting his budget to the Board of Supervisors sometime tomorrow evening as well during that meeting. So just a little bit of a heads-up about that. And then I know questions about the weather are coming up, and I know Dr. Baker and his staff are keeping a good eye on the situation. So when we know something, when he figures it out, we'll let everybody know. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. Ms. Grant, please.
Filling in on more of the next couple of weeks that Ms. Shelley touched on, we definitely have a budget focus for the next month or so, but in the next, this weekend next, we're slated to have our budget finished this evening. Mr. Taylor presents his budget to the Board of Supervisors tomorrow. Wednesday and Thursday, most of us will be in Richmond at the State Conference, and we focus on legislation and get a chance to speak with our legislators on Thursday. So it'll be a big week of budget talks. So we will definitely keep you guys posted if we hear any wonderful news, and I will yield the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. I want to thank my colleagues for their comments. I'm going to, same for making comments at this time, and focus my comments on the budget issues in 8.02. So with that being said, we close Board Member Comments and move to Superintendent's Comments, 5.03. Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to, really just echo some of the comments that have already been made, I'd also like to thank Mo Petway and members of the NAACP, their leadership. to thank Mo Petway and members of the NAACP, their leadership, and the Sunday School Union. The Great Debate has truly, foundationally, been about how to help our students be more successful in the 20th, 21st century. And I think the ability to communicate, the ability to articulate and to research, and many of the skills that come into play, not only in the preparation phase, but in the finality of The Great Debate, has, I think, integrated very well with what we're trying to do instructionally in the classroom. So I want to thank them for their commitment for allowing us to be a part of it, and for really the passion and drive behind it. I think that we've seen an expansion, at least in the short time that I've been here, in having even schools from other school divisions participate in it. So I do want to thank them for that commitment, and I feel very humbled to have been along with you all, recognized for any contributions we've made to that. I also wanted to, and I pointed out the artwork earlier, each month, we've gotten so into the routine that I am continuously inspired by the outpouring of talent that we have in our school division, and the teachers in the classroom that help to cultivate and nurture that talent. I really believe that the visual and performing arts are not additional to what we try to accomplish in public education, but fundamental. And I think that the creative lifelines, the opportunities that are provided are essential to our students. And I'm just, again, thrilled to be able to enjoy these moments with them when they are here, getting to see their artwork with their families and loved ones. Also, thank you as well to our maintenance folks who have worked with Dominion, and for our schools, who unfortunately on Friday had to step up to that challenge of trying to manage a last-minute power outage in a situation where we had to work with our community to have our students transition back home after just arriving. And I appreciate the leadership of the principals and the staffs at those two schools, because that's no easy task. And all reports that have been shared with me, they did a wonderful job of managing that situation along with their teachers. And I also enjoyed the Scholar Bowl. Did not realize that members of my own staff were so competitive against me. But because I was on the same team with individuals that were very competitive, I was on a very good team, even though I was last place. But that was a great event, and it was great to see so many of our schools involved in it. I think the majority of our schools had a team, and it was just a great spirit and a great sense of camaraderie. And again, money going to a good cause, the foundation and the creative grants. And then lastly, I'll share that I am about as confident in terms of what the weather will bring tomorrow as just about everybody right now. And I'll just remind the board that when we mobilize to try to evaluate those conditions, we certainly want to make decisions as soon as we possibly can. But when the actual inclement weather that we are concerned about is not set to arrive until the time that buses would be on the road, that makes for a challenging decision. And just know that those decisions are made with a great deal of collaboration, consideration, and again, safety being the top priority. Thank you.
Dr. Baker, thank you for your comments. Moving on to 6.01, board committee reports. Any board committee reports? Mr. Blaine.
This is really a duplication, but on the 10th of February, it's Wednesday night, there's an open house at our Career and Technical Center. And you folks that are at home, if you have elementary children, if you have children who are, I'm sorry, let me say, middle school children especially, and eighth graders that are getting ready for high school, it's a terrific time to get, give these young people an opportunity to see what the Career and Technical Center offers, some of the options that are there. And I might say that the work that they do that there is the fundamental building block for them entering a career later on. And this is just really an outstanding opportunity. So that's the 10th, from 6 o'clock until 8 o'clock at the Career and Technical Center. Secondly, our division belongs to District 11 of Skills USA, and there's going to be competition. This is among the Career and Technical people, again, everything from plumbing and just about, got a word here that doesn't want to come out, I'm sorry, right now, metalwork and leadership skills. There'll be some testing and so on. And that'll begin the 19th of February, starts at 3 o'clock there. And anybody who is interested in seeing some of this competition from Skills USA, it's an opportunity to see a lot about them. So I invite everybody to come. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Is there any other committee reports? Seeing none, we'll close and go to 7.01 and 7.02, consent agenda items. Dr. Martin.
On the consent agenda this evening, on the minutes of the January 29th, 2016, and February 1st, 2016, budget work sessions and donations which are used in customary. Staff ask that the consent agenda be approved.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Motion on the floor by Dr. Meyer to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Shelley. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposes? Hearing none. The consent agenda is approved, 7-0. Moving on to 8.01, approval of resolution in support of African-American History Month. Do we have a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Blalock. Seconded by Ms. Shelley. Any discussion? Any discussion? I'd like to read the resolution, and then we'll vote. And I'll say before I read the resolution, both humbled and honored as a chairman of this body to be able to read this resolution at this time. And it reads, "Resolution in Support of African-American History Month, Spotsylvania County Public Schools. Whereas African-American History Month is intertwined with the development of America, and its study provides an essential perspective of life in America today. And whereas knowledge of African-American history enhances personal and intellectual development and advances communication among individuals in the family, the school, the community, the state, the nation, and the world. And whereas African-American men and women have made significant contributions to the growth, prosperity, and character of America. And whereas African-American history is promoted by the cooperative efforts of educators, parents, businesses, local governing bodies, industry, and members of the community and professional organizations of all backgrounds. Now therefore be it resolved that the month of February is to be recognized as African-American History Month in Spotsylvania County Public Schools, which will be signed by Baron P. Braswell, Chair, adopted February 8th, 2016." I want to say before we have the official vote, I want to take the opportunity to say that, and I've said before, that African-American History Month is something that we engage in year-round. African-American History Month is and should not be relegated to one month because the contributions of African-Americans in our society have, not only is this resolution states, but is an integral part of the American experience. Understanding African-American history, and I've used this analogy before, is a stew, if you will. All the ingredients are placed in that stew to create an excellent, an excellent experience that can match no other. And one element of that ingredient that's taken out does not make the American stew. So with that being said, we want to continue to study and support African-American history as intertwined in the American history, because there's really no separation between the two. It's not a salad bowl approach to understanding and engaging in history. It is a great stew, and it tastes really great. So that being said...
Mr. Chairman, before you ask for the vote, I'd just like to make a statement. We have a gem here in Spotsylvania, and it ties in specifically with what we're talking about. But here you have an opportunity to see some African-American history in Spotsylvania. And down at J.J. Wright, we have a museum there that just celebrated its fifth anniversary, and this would be a wonderful time this month to take time and take your classes down and visit, and yourselves as well.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll start with Ms. Grant. Roll call vote.
Grant, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Twig, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Blalock, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Shelley, aye.
Vote carries 7-0. Thank you. Moving on to 8.02, the main effort of the evening, approval of the fiscal year 2017 School Board Operating Budget and the 2017-2021 Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP. We have a motion on the floor for that.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I will second.
Moved by Dr. Meyer, seconded by Mr. Blaine. We'll start with, we'll have discussion. Any discussion?
Here.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Twig.
Well, Dr. Baker and staff, I personally am grateful for the extensive work that you've put into this complex budget that we've just initiated a resolution toward. I represent 17,000 residents here in Livingston District, and when I spoke with them over recent years, they remain concerned about three things in this county. The after-school buses, eventual eliminating pay-for-play, and teachers' pay, and staff's pay. My constituents are also concerned about tax increases at this time, given our present local economy. And I would like to see each of these concerns addressed without asking our county for an increase in $12.5 million, which would equate to a nine-and-a-half cent tax increase straight up. I remain in support of capital improvement projects as part of our budget, because the people voted for the CIP and a recent bond referendum, which alone accounts for two-cent tax increase. And please note that I, too, always want the best for our students, our teachers, and our service providers, and all of the tools they will continue to need for our continued success. And realizing that this board will have additional opportunity to support its budget, I will be respectfully voting against this budget at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Twig. Any other comments? Any other comments? Okay, let's start with Ms. Shelley, and then Dr. Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Well, once again, I'll thank you, Dr. Baker, and his staff, finding it staff, everyone, for all that you did to put this budget together. First thing Dr. Baker did when he presented the budget to us was he dedicated this budget to the students of Spotsylvania County. This budget is for our students, hands down. So that's why we're here, is for our students. So thank you, Dr. Baker, for that. There are, everything about this budget is good. There's more that we could, we, there are more needs that we're not in here at this point in time, maybe next year. But we're adding, we're adding general agents, some more teachers. We're adding school psychologists and quite a 24 special education personnel. We are adding to some of the cuts that we made previously, years ago. So we're trying to get back where we, where it fell a few years ago. The pay increase for our staff, they work hard. They work every day. Their job is not in just your basic, come in at 8 o'clock and leave at 3:00. That is not their job. They're working 24/7. And I want the public to know that, because I've seen some comments on the Freelance Star articles about staff and about teachers, and they don't know what teachers do. They're in there, they're working hard constantly for your children, for our children of Spotsylvania County. So I want people to understand that our teachers, our par educators, our administrators, our custodians, our, and I know I'm going to leave people out, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, everyone in our buildings and around, our maintenance workers, everyone is working for our students, every single one of them. And we need to remember that with this budget. That pay increase is nowhere near what they deserve, but this is what we're asking at this point in time. So I'm going to 100% support your budget, Dr. Baker. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. Dr. Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I second the motion for the budget approval, because I am convinced that this budget represents the needs for the, for this school division, and the needs that we need to ask of our Board of Supervisors as the funding authority to fund these needs. I'm not going to try to determine it as a tax increase or tax whatever. That's not our role. Our role is not to determine what taxes are required. Our role is to specify the needs, present those needs, justify those needs, as we are requesting that they be met. My vote is not by Cortlandt District. My vote is as a school board member for the entire district, because whatever we do, we do for the betterment of the entire school division. We do have needs that need to be addressed. We have staff whose salary should be addressed. We're just beginning a compensation study, but we can easily identify the inequities and where we need to address those. The superintendent has addressed those needs in the review that has been done, in the ongoing review that will occur. But we can clearly say that that is a need. We can also say that the staffing requirements, not just on special ed, but one of the questions that we asked, and that was answered very succinctly in terms of the additional 12 general education teachers. And we took a look at the needs that are there, the instructional needs that are there, and we need the, at least 10 of those, to address those specific needs for those students. We know that our student body is changing, and hence their needs are ever so important. We cannot ignore them. Last year, when we presented our budget, we did ask for additional funds, and we received $15,000, $17,000. And then money that was already part of the Massaponix Church Road project was given back to us. Change the color of the money, call it new, call it what you will. But, you know, in truly new money, additional funds was the $17,000. We've been asking all along that funds be there that are sustainable, so that as we have our strategic plan, our long-range plan, we are looking for ways to say that we can count on something and not just level funding. We need something that's sustainable, that can carry us through into the future. And we can't plan or carry out our plan if we don't have a long-range plan in terms of funding and funding needs being met. So with that, I'm going to vote yes, not as a district, but not as a Cortlandt District, even though, you know, I was elected by the Cortlandt District, but I'm on this board as part of the board for the entire school division. And we do have instructional needs, and we do need to meet those instructional needs, and we need to ask for the funding so that we can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Are there any other comments? Mr. Blaine.
This is a needs-based budget. I'd like to compliment our staff on a very thorough preparation, thorough analysis, and careful consideration when it got introduced. And it is needs-based. And part of it is catching up needs-based, things that have existed and been in need by us for the last several years. Actually, though, it does not represent a full value or a full coverage of all the needs that we have. Our needs still far exceed what this budget does, and I'm disappointed from that standpoint. If you look at technology, for example, I think that we need more people there. If you have a tech, an IT person in a school, and perhaps serving two or three different schools, and the problem arises that A, School A, and Aaron School B, and you need the help, it ain't there.
help, it ain't there. So we need more people in that category. If you look at CTE, and I was just talking about that a few minutes ago, we're expecting over the next decade about a 13% increase in food and accommodation services, people who work in that industry, people that are in transportation, for example, tourism and required personnel. Anticipation is for a 27% increase in the need for construction workers. Look at the several thousand homes and other buildings that have been approved right now for Spotsylvania, and you have to have carpenters and plumbers, and we do not even teach plumbing right today. Well, we have to have people for those industries. There's a lot of career opportunities for students that are prepared. And if you don't provide the training when it's available, when it's possible to do so, you can't come back 10 years later and suddenly say, "Oh, we better do something." In the health and related fields, they expect a 30% increase, for example, in personnel that is needed to do that. And we have our ore in that water. We can do things. We have an increasing number of mandates, the standards for the CE diploma, CTE diploma, the mandates are increasing. Our federal Perkins funding is down, and when the state and the federal doesn't provide it, there's only one place we can come, and that's back to the local taxpayer. And if we don't do it, their mandates, we are forced to do it, so there's not a choice. It will happen, but what will we cut? And we've talked here about preschool, and we've talked about the transportation for our sports people. Something has to, is going to go by the board. So I'm disappointed in that sense. In the preschool area, I've spoken so many times about our needs there, and we're fortunate, our staff actually made a, an application, as some of you may remember, where the, they're going to expand their Virginia Preschool Initiative. We're benefiting from that, which is a major step forward. But still, out of 1,800 students coming to us every fall to enter kindergarten, I think right now we have about 225 combined in total in head start in the Virginia Preschool Initiative. And not all the rest need preschool, because they're getting well-trained at home, but there's a good 500 of those kids that are coming to school, and they're just not prepared. And if they don't get it at preschool level, if they're not there, they have a hard time catching up, and if they don't catch up by the end of third grade, they're in trouble. So it gets down to values when we decide to fund things. And so I'm pleased with the budget that we have. I wish it were higher, but have to be reasonable, but it's a very conservative budget, conservative on needs, and I would like to compliment our staff for making a good budget available.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Ms. Gramps.
Spotsylvania County Public Schools is one of the number-one landowners in the state of Spots, in the state, in the county. And employees, there are 3,000 employees, making it the number-one employer in the county. 71% of those employees live in this county, and a lot of them live in Berkeley and Livingston Districts. And I've heard from numerous of our employees that live in our districts over the last month or so, and they're pretty unanimous that they all agree with this budget and are willing to support our education system. So as far as I see our job as a school board, is we have, is our duty to approve a budget. And it's our duty to scrutinize the budget and make sure that the money is being spent on needs instead of wishes, and to better education for our students and for our community. Our community is going to benefit from a good budget. The budget we are voting on tonight, just in our mandatory cost increase, which are things that we cannot affect at all, we have a $2.9 million gap based on level funding, based on our, our federal, just our special education alone, which is rising astronomically, our needs in that department. The federal government has, you know, promised since the '70s that they're going to pay 40% of those mandates, and they come up with 8% of the money. So someone has to make up that money somewhere. It falls back on the localities. We can't change federal mandates or state mandates that aren't funded. All we can do as a, as a community is come together and provide a good education and meet the mandates that are required by law. So between our federal mandates, our state mandates, and our fixed costs that we're meeting, the gap is not unreasonable at all. There's, we've scrutinized it, we've been through it, and there are many things that are left off of the wish list, because that would be irresponsible. So we, clearly responsible, needs-based budget that is based on numbers and things that we've been over. So it's, as Dr. Meyer said, it is not our job to do the county's budget. It is our job to say the needs of this division and a large, for the number-one employer in the county. And we need to take care of our students and our employees, and the budget is over 70% based in instruction. It is, there's not a lot of waste, and that is our job. This is the best budget that we can present in this year, and it has my full support.
Thank you, Ms. Gramps. Ms. Blaylock.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell, and very nicely said, Ms. Gramps. I echo your remarks. You know, sometimes y'all may get a little bored with us right now as we sound redundant, but we're going to hear it again. It is the number-one thing I vote on next to picking a superintendent. This is hugely important. It's been said this evening, and it's worth saying again, we are the number-one employer with over 3,000 employees. We're the largest entity in Spotsylvania County. We have somewhere around 24,000 students we serve every single day, with the 11th-largest in the state of Virginia. We're large by any means. We're a large division. One of the better decisions we ever made as a board was bringing Dr. Baker to lead this, this group of staff, students, and all members of the team that make what I always refer to as our little city with our most valuable resources work every single day. I agree with Ms. Gramps and, and Dr. Meyer, my colleagues, when they talk about what our job is. When you walk in to elect a school board member in Spotsylvania County, there's two boards that govern in this county, your supervisors and your school board. School board does not have taxation authority. It is not our job to decide how it's funded. It's our job to tell you what the needs are. To even remotely insinuate this is not a needs-based budget, let me refresh you on what went off the table when I became a board member years ago. When I first became a board member, we were ready to launch a regional autism center. We were ready to build another school. We had huge plans. We had activity buses. We had all kinds of big things on the horizons that, to this day, I still dream about. We're nowhere close to that yet, but we're going to get there one day, so to pretend this isn't a needs-based budget, I'd like you to come speak to me personally, to my face on that one. There is so much that we are not doing every year that I can't wait till we do. That regional autism center is one I'm still waiting on. We were the perfect location for that. If you really look into what happens under the special education umbrella, there are so many needs that could have been met by that center being built right here. And we still meet those needs, but those needs come at a very high cost. I'm so glad Ms. Gramps pointed out, if you just look at our mandated costs, we already have a gap, just right there. And that's mandated. That's no choices from ours. We have four levels of funding. It's going to be your federal, state, local, and then what I would call other, grants and whatnot. And right now, we do have to turn to our locality, so I can easily go next week in front of my board of supervisors and say, "This is a needs-based budget. My job is to make sure the children of this county have the best education they can have, and that they are competitive when they leave us." And we want every child to leave us either work-ready, military-ready, college-ready, university-ready. Whatever they do, we want them to be successful in life, but we want them ready and competitive. We are looking at things to make them competitive, such as the IB program. We upped our AP courses. Then we turn around and we try to catch the kids who need us most, and then everyone in between, and not let them fall through the cracks. That's a hard job to do. And as an elected official to govern on the school board, I'm extremely proud that we have been able to do it with such success with so little money. So I'm certainly hoping that if you value public education and you want the best education for your child, that you speak to your board of supervisors, because that's where my next stop is. And we're going to ask for funding. If the funding doesn't come through at that time, we have to go back to the table, and sometimes that's, that's not, not the best option, because that means that some of the things are going to have to come off the table that we wanted. We'll throw out a few items. We're, we're trying to restore the cafeteria monitors in elementary schools. We're trying to put teachers back in classrooms. We're trying to reduce the activities athletic fee down to $50, and slowly, as my colleague says, sunset those over time. So not only does it have my support, it has my passionate support. And it's unfortunate that it can't come in unanimous, because we have got to stand up for the children of this county, and if, if we can all sit up here and say we love this budget, that's probably not true, because there's something we all want. But can we say it's the right budget and the due diligence has been done? Absolutely. So I thank Dr. Baker and his staff for presenting us with a budget and allowing us the work sessions to ask our questions. We rolled up our sleeves, we've had, we've had the discussions, and now we're moving on to the next phase. And the next phase for us is going to be to take this to our board of supervisors, ask for funding, and then we'll take our next steps after that. So again, I thank Dr. Baker and his staff for the budget, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Blaylock, and I want to thank all my colleagues for their comments in regards to the budget. I will say, give you my bottom line upfront, that I am very supportive of this budget. I commend Dr. Baker and his staff for the preparation of the budget. And I do it for a variety of different reasons, but the primary reason is that we have a strategic plan at the school board. We have the capacity in this budget, not only to deal with the issues that face us today, but it positions us for success in the future. And after all, I think I gave a divine scripture in one of the workshops where I said, "If you, if you don't have a vision, you end up in a ditch." And so I want to thank Dr. Baker and his staff for providing a vision for the school division, for our children, so that every year we're not making a decision that's myopic, myopic in terms of worrying about what tax break can we provide. We value our children, and yes, money is important, but it's not the only thing. This budget, even though you see numbers, they represent our children and the families of Spotsylvania County, and they represent our best hopes and aspirations for the future. I gave a couple stories that were true about how Spotsylvania County and their investment in my children has provided a great benefit, not only to this community in the short run, but also in the long run. My son is in college now, and he's matriculated from Cortlandt High School in Spotsylvania County Schools, and he's performing admirably. And I know that when he graduates, he will make his contribution back to not only society, but to this great county that invested in him. I made mention of another young man that I call an adopted son, that because he took advantage of the GED program that we provide here, was the first in a while in his family to not be on public assistance, that he served and is serving in the United States Army. He served in Iraq, Afghanistan, and he's currently stationed in Kansas. I said at that time, as a result of that, he is paying property tax, he's paying state tax, he's paying federal taxes. He's chipping in, because we invested in him. To be so narrow-minded and shortsighted to think that an investment in an education is nothing more than wasting of money, you don't see the full picture. You're leading us into a ditch. So I say to all the naysayers that think that this budget does not meet the needs of our children, to step back and look at real-life stories of how Spotsylvania County Schools change lives. We do it here. It's not just about a bunch of test scores. It's not about a bunch of statistics. Those statistics are the people that we love, that we have been charged to care for. And so Dr. Baker and his staff and all the teachers that give it all up every day for our greatest resource, you got my support. With that being said, we'll call for the vote, starting with Ms. Gramps. Roll call vote, please.
Gramps, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Twig, no.
Braswell, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Shelley, aye.
Budget carries six, one, and no abstentions. We had an amended agenda to include eight point zero three for closing schools on March 1st, March 1st, 2016, to ensure that we have capacity for voting. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make the motion. I would like to be able to discuss, if I could get a second. I want to make the motion that we close schools on March the 1st, and I would like in discussion to share my rationale behind that.
Absolutely.
Second motion?
A motion made by Ms. Blaylock to close schools on March 1st to facilitate voting for primaries, for both Democratic and Republican primary, and seconded by Dr. Meyer. Discussion.
I think-
Dr. Baker will speak.
Okay, Dr. Baker.
I know that board members may have questions, and I appreciate it, Mrs. Blaylock, making the motion to add this to the agenda or to amend the agenda. I wanted to give just a brief summary of the past month as it pertains to our preparation as a school division for the March 1st primary, as 18 of our 26, 18 of the 26 precincts in the county are Spotsylvania County Public Schools. And certainly every four years, our school division has been involved in the past. My staff, and I wanted to make sure the board knew this in advance of your discussion, early on, early part, mid-part of January, shared with me that there were some concerns that this was going to be a much larger-than-normal potential turnout, and that they were going to be working with the individual, well, the 18 schools, to try to mitigate the many challenges that will come with high voter turnout, and really, just all day long, from dawn to dusk. And initially, they said that we may want to give some consideration to whether we can manage those logistics, and some of the concerns that would have to do with safety and access to the school building throughout the day. My charge to the staff at that time, and we have continued to work with the Sheriff's Department, because we certainly value the integrity of the instructional calendar, as well as wanting to keep school on that day, especially given the uncertainty of the winter season. They had been at hard, hard at work, not only working together as a staff, but the Sheriff's Department was willing to provide additional security to our schools. As some time has passed, and we know that we still had future sessions scheduled to, again, mitigate the challenges associated with this primary, I believe you have in front of you right now a copy of a letter that was drafted and sent to me this afternoon by Kelly Akers, the Director of Elections and General Registrar, and I think she also had copied Ms. Blaylock, who she had spoken to along with me. I think we certainly have some parents in community that are concerned, but I think we have, are at the point where, on the one hand, we believe that we would do all that we need to, to try to be ready to- we need to, to try to be ready to manage that day, but I think we are becoming increasingly concerned. And now that we have had this request from Ms. Akers to respectfully consider closing school for students on that day, we are concerned that if we even were able to go forward, that the day itself would be compromised as far as what would be accessible to students and trying to manage all those other things, that it might not be as productive as we would have normally liked it to have been. So I'm sharing that as a, as a backstory, certainly willing to support what the school board would, would determine in terms of the motion that's been given. And I also know that we would want to, on the front end, and discussed this briefly with my staff, designate makeup time for that day with this potential decision. So if we were, if the board was to vote to support that decision to close school for students, right now, I believe our staff would want to recommend that we allow March 1st to be designated teacher professional development workday. And then we would look at two of our subsequent workday, or subsequent half-days in March and April that would then be converted into full days, so that we would already have that time made up. So I'm, at some point after you have discussed it, I can have Ms. Flannard come up and provide any specifics relative to what the makeup time would look like. But I wanted to share all of that as a summary before you get into your discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Ms. Blaylock?
Thank you.
I have a question.
I'm sorry. So if Dr. Baker was right, we do, each of you have a letter in front of you that is from Ms. Akers, Ms. Kelly Akers, the voter registrar of Spotsylvania County, to Dr. Baker. I was copied on this. The reason I was copied on this is, is I had a constituent about a week ago bring it up to me, some concerns that were discussed in a PTO meeting, and I learned that I had several constituents that had, I don't know, organized, if you will, to talk about their concerns. And it isn't just a safety concern, it was logistics of the schools running properly during that day. We did know a primary was coming, however, from what, if you read your letter in front of you, you will see that Ms. Akers points out the huge increase in the people who have registered to vote. And I did have a face-to-face meeting with her to go into detail about what is expected in this day, and to be honest, they're not sure what to expect. She said she's pretty accurate at giving estimates for what she thinks will be a voter turnout, but this one, although she knows is going to be large, larger than normal, she just really can't get her head around yet what to tell us. However, she felt strongly enough to ask us to consider closing for schools. And if you read the letter, I certainly won't read this to everyone, but just a sentence in the second paragraph says, "Due to the unusually large number of voter anticipated in highly-publicized presidential primaries, I respectfully request that Spotsylvania County School Board close schools on the day of this election," which is March 1st, the primaries. It goes on to bullet point exactly all of the reasons why. We had already been working with the Sheriff's Department. That was another thing. We're gonna have to have more officers around and available to us at an expense. We weren't even sure at this point who would cover that. Of course, we would, but that had not even been determined. We have several counties around us that have already done this. This is not, we would not be the first. A precedent has been set. We know that Chesterfield, Henrico, Carolina, among several other counties have already chosen to do the same thing. So as a, as a board member of the Lee Hill District, it's been brought to my attention by several constituents. Like I say, I've met with our voter registrar, I've met with my constituent, I met with Dr. Baker about this and said, "This has now become a concern." Not that we're scared that it would be a bad day, it's just can we still run 18 of our schools with a very large voter turnout? They talked about curbside voting. There is curbside voting available to people who may not can walk all the way in. It is open to the general public. The general public could be very different than someone, right now, there are restrictions on who can walk in school. There are people who could go vote. It's just an open day with a lot of people coming in and out, and how we would do that with 18 schools would take a little bit of extra security. You can stand within 40 feet of a precinct. There's just different rules that we, she and I went over. So having said all of that, I would like to ask my board members how they feel about it, and do you have any discussion? I know you've all had time to review the letter.
Thank you, Ms. Blaylock. Any discussion? Any others? Dr. Meyer, and then Mr. Blaine.
One, I want to thank Mrs. Blaylock for bringing this forward, and for Ms. Kelly Akers having brought this forward as well. She did add, I remember that back in November, so she had brought to my attention, you know, primaries are getting to be more of a concern, and kind of left it at that. And then, you know, when the topic came up today, I can clearly see, and she has definitely enumerated the different points which are very pertinent to us having, you know, a productive day, a safe day, and how can we best proceed? I think the thing that I would like to hear is from Dr. Baker's staff as the, kind of the makeup, the method in which we would make up March 1st, so that it be clearly delineated.
Could you ask to answer, Dr. Baker, as well? How many actual school buildings are involved? Because many of the precincts...
Eighteen.
Yes. Eight, um...
It says eighteen. You're sure that's...
Yeah, eighteen of our schools, but there are only, I think I said 18 out of 26 precincts. So there's 26, I believe, total precincts for voting in the county.
Many of them have two precincts in at least.
Right, right, right. And so 18 of those are Spotsylvania County Public Schools, but of our 32 facilities, you know, you see that we have about over 50% of our facilities.
And I can clearly, you know, because like Salem Elementary is a voting precinct within the Cortland District, and I can clearly see, you know, the difficulties that will be occurring. And so it's a large number, and for that reason, you know, I think it is well worth us considering it. Mrs. Flannard?
And I, I, Ms. Flannard is gonna share with you some specific dates that can be considered. I do want to say that all of our principals, along with Mr. Lynn, Mr. Upperco, and the Sheriff's Department, were, over the last month, very willing to, and are still willing to do all that they can to try to put us in the best position to be successful that day. However, I, I know that some of the school buildings have particular challenges when it comes to how many folks can make it into the parking lot. And so I, I think it's, it's not even a will issue as it is just sometimes the, the design and capacity of our parking lots, coupled with accesses to the school buildings, makes some buildings just extremely challenging. So with that, I'll have Ms. Flannard share a couple of the dates that we were looking at to perhaps make up that day in terms of student time.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. In looking at the current instructional calendar, we have, besides the last week of school that does have some half-days, we have three remaining half-days that are used for professional learning by our staff. And one is this Friday, which is very, very quick, and, and we actually think it would be a little bit much to ask for on our families to do a turnaround that quickly. But we also have March 11th and April 22nd. And what we are proposing to, to look at doing is taking that March 11th as well as the April 22nd and make them full school days and allowing that March 1st to recapture that day as a professional learning day. That way, our staff still has the opportunity to receive the professional learning that our calendar does support, because we do know how important the professional learning is to help and support our students in their instruction.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Thank you, Mrs. Flannard.
Ms., uh, Mr. Blaine, did you have any other questions?
No.
Okay. Ms. Shelley?
I, I just wanted as well to thank Mrs. Blaylock for bringing this to us, and Dr. Baker and staff for looking at what we could do to make up the time. So this, it's safety first, and I think this is just another aspect. We don't want to put our students at risk with that number, with the possibility of quite a few extra people coming into our buildings.
Thank you. Any others? Any others? I just want to add one question, too, for consideration in the future, is extras, after-school activities during that day when schools close, what's gonna happen? How would we handle that?
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. I did have an opportunity to speak with Mr. Wolf in regards to after-school activities, and it appears that the stars have aligned and we are in between seasons in regards to athletic events. We do still have a couple of programs going on that evening, but not necessarily in areas where voting would be occurring. For example, we may have a performance or something in the evening that, that really is in an auditorium or, or a situation like that.
The stars have aligned. Okay. We're gonna have a, a vote. We heard...
We need to amend the motion to include the makeup days.
Oh, yes. Okay, so we have a motion to amend...
Point of order, would the chairman allow me just to restate my motion?
Restate it.
Okay. I move that we close Spotsylvania County Schools March 1st for students, making it a teacher professional workday with the two, with the makeup time being made up on...
March 11th.
March 11th.
And April 22nd.
And April 27th, 2nd.
22nd.
And I will second that motion as before.
Okay, move by Ms. Blaylock, seconded by Dr. Meyer. Roll call vote.
I would like to ask Ms. Flannard a question. With your suggestion of these makeup days and so on, you're, you're absolutely clear on that and you're satisfied?
Yes, sir, we are. We did vet this and contacted our level administrators to really gain the input from the schools as well.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mr....
I, I will just say, and I know that board understands this, but I, just to reiterate, we know what we are saying today, we are crystal clear on. What we don't know is we still have a good, solid, regardless of what the Groundhog says, a good, solid month that we are gonna be concerned about weather and inclement weather affecting our instructional calendar. So that's our best available data today, and that's what the recommendation is. But certainly, if we run into additional inclement weather, there could be reconsideration of a number of things.
Okay, Dr. Baker, thank you. I have faith in Poxatani. This, I'm gonna move on with the vote, starting with Ms. Gramps.
Gramps, aye.
Mr. Blaine?
I, Blaine. Twig, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Shelley, aye.
Thank you. Motion carries seven, zero. Informational items, Mr. Wolf, or usual and customary, moving on to 10.01, any unfinished business? Unfinished business? Anyone? I just have one piece of unfinished business that I want to have addressed on the sixth grade participation in sports. Where are we at on that? When will we receive a final course of action? Or, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. In regards to your question, I've met with the middle school principals here last week. We continue with the discussion. I meet with the Athletic Task Force as a larger committee this week and follow up with them by the end of the month. So hopefully sometime in March, we would hope to have a decision ready for the board.
Great, thank you. Any other unfinished business? Hearing none. Any new business? 10.02, no new business. Closed meeting items. Resolve that the board conduct a closed meeting for the following purposes: consideration of candidates for employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the board as permitted by 2.2-3711A1 of the Virginia Code, I mean, Code of Virginia. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Blaine, seconded by Ms. Gramps. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposes? Hearing none. We're in closed session. Meyer, making a motion that we return to open session, seconded by Mr. Blaine. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none. Seven, zero. We're back in open session. Certification of closed meeting, whereas the Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting, may have a motion to certify closed meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Blaine, seconded by Ms. Gramps. Roll call vote?
Gramps, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Shelley, aye.
Thank you. Seven, zero. We're gonna ask Dr. Martin.
Motion is that the school board accepts the recommendation of the Superintendent for Personnel Appointments, Assignments, Resignations, Retirement, and a Request for Extended Leave for the 2016-17 School Years presented in Closed Meeting and permitted by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer, for the motion, seconded by Ms. Gramps. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposes? Hearing none. Seven, zero. Motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Ms. Gramps moves to adjourn, seconded by Ms. Shelley. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Hearing no nays. Meeting is adjourned, and the time is 8:05.